We are the Peterborough Select Board meeting on June 1st. First time in person in this room for a select board meeting, right?
Yeah.
With a crowd, I had some crowd. We're on air and yeah, in what 14 months, 15 months?
That's March.
March 20. Very exciting. So welcome everyone, I'm Tyler Ward. And with me are fellow select board members Bill Taylor and Bill Kennedy. Welcome Bill, congratulations.
Thank you.
Your first meeting here with us. Well, you know. Anyway, tonight's agenda, we'll have, we'll hear from Karen Hatcher, Community Economic Development Coordinator. If you have been on the Facebook and watching the progress of the Community Meals to Go program, you're just as excited as the rest of us at House successful. So Karen will bring us up to speed on that. Dory Dartman is here with some other members of the Peterborough Energy Ad-Hoc Committee. And we'll discuss moving forward on an energy plan. Everybody knows that there was a warrant on the, at town meeting that passed, setting the goal of 100% renewables by 2030.
Electricity 2030, 2050 for.
Right. Excellent, so that's good news. And then we'll hear from probably Seth DeClane with an update on drug conditions and outdoor watering man issues. Just because it rained this past weekend doesn't mean we're flush with water. And then we'll select a chair for the select board. We have Tim Brezvik behind the scenes, he's taping this for future reference. With me is Nicole McStay, Town Administrator, and Rachel.
Gretchen.
Gretchen Ray. Gretchen Ray, sorry. First time within the meeting with Gretchen for taking our minutes. Right. With that, Karen, welcome, great to see you.
Good to see you, thank you, thanks.
Love you.
Without a mask. Well, we wrapped up the Community Meals to Go project on May 27th last Thursday. And actually, for the first time since the beginning, we ran out of meals on the last night. Typically, we have a few left that we donate, but so it was a great way to end. It just, I wanted to give a summary of what we accomplished so that the board and the town could understand the effort and the results and have it on record. So as you may remember, back in December, this project was a response to two really pressing problems of the pandemic. The first being growing food insecurity and the second being how we would keep our restaurants going through the winter. And so the idea was raise money, pay restaurants for meals and feed people. Pretty simple. So in the course of what we did, the beginning, we had a very humble goal of $50,000. We reached that goal by February 28th. And by March 31st, got to $68,000 after we kind of reset for $75,000. And got there by April 30th. And we finished the campaign on May 23rd in excess of $86,500 raised. And that came largely from 200 individual donors. Many of them, 40% of them were recurring, so gave every week or gave every month. We had some large gifts, the Rotary Club, the 100 Plus Women Who Care, the Kiwanis, and a FEMA grant that also were part of that, but largely supported by our community. We had seven restaurants engaged in the project. They were paying $10,000, sorry, $10 per meal, not $10,000. That might not have gone very far.
We're gonna get to have them started around now.
Started. So we ended up serving, distributing just under 7,500 meals. And that happened really every Tuesday and Thursday at 5 o'clock. Rain, snow, fog, wind, black flies, heat. We were out there.
And cold again yesterday.
And cold. Well, we weren't out for the cold. It was actually really all me on Thursday. People came from more than a dozen towns. 60% of them were from Peterborough, retracted. 10% from Jaffrey, 10% from Antrim-Bennington, and the rest were assorted towns, everywhere from Hillsboro out to Dublin and Hopkinton even, because a couple of the workers from the school stopped in line. So that was great. And any meals we had left were delivered to the Peterborough Food Pantry or to the South Meadow Freezers to go to families. And so all meals were distributed and then were wasted, which was a wonderful thing. We ended up with about $9,350 left after we closed out. The plan though was to purchase gift cards. And we purchased gift cards from 24 restaurants and food-based businesses from Antrim to Jaffrey and all towns in between. Those went to 10 partner organizations to distribute through the balance of the year. So whenever they need to. So that River Center Grapevine, MATS, Manaduck Family Services Shelter From the Storms, Southern New Hampshire Services, Manaduck Community Hospital, Hanbell Social Work Department, Manaduck at Home and Manaduck Center for Violence Prevention, all got gift cards delivered today. Volunteers, special thanks to Sharon Smith who lined up volunteers to go buy them and to deliver them. All got done today, so that was pretty exciting. We had some pretty significant media that happened. We were on WMUR. Our most popular Facebook post was a cat eating dinner at a table, just to say. I just thought I'd add that. People love that, we got a lot of play. Social media was how we got the word out largely. I really want to thank the volunteers who were really the core of this. We had the same group out there almost every week and some subs in between. So special shout out in public to Merida and Tony Cassidy, Caitlin and Kathy Manfree, Tina Crevel, Lynn Phillips, Joy Fleming, Carol Hamilton and Peter Johnson, Joan Barrows, Barbara Harlowe and Megan Wood and a bunch of others, including Tyler and Bill who came out for a, to sub out one night. Thank you. And several others who just subbed for us. And also, there was a core planning group that met, which represented the River Center and 68 Hours of Hunger, the Food Pantry, Peterborough Fire and Rescue. I want to shout out to those guys because they were there every week directing traffic and just socializing, I think, with folks in the line, which is pretty fun. So some really wonderful people stepped up and stepped up for the whole 16 weeks of this and really were like my partners in it. So I just want to publicly acknowledge their effort. So that's the report. We're wrapped up, it was a project, it was not a program. It had a beginning, a middle, and an end, and hopefully we won't ever have to do this again. But it responded to a period in time, hopefully we won't find ourselves here. But we do know how to do it if we have to. And I feel really just proud of it. It was a great effort and that's my report.
Well done, you, let me clap.
You know, that's, that's, it's really moving to hear that. And I get, I'm getting chilled, but at the same time, I'm heartbroken that so many people were in need. And it's, it's not going away, the need. We're kind of failing as a country in that regard, where people are kind of left behind in that situation. And they're so vulnerable when something like, hopefully we'll never have another pandemic if there are certainly other issues coming down the pike right at us. Yeah, thank you Karen for all that hard work and everybody you mentioned, all the restaurants that frankly making meals too. It's really, it was, it was moving.
Special kudos to you Karen, this is what you do and you do it very well.
Alright.
Sure.
Okay, our next global catastrophe. How are we gonna fix it in Peterborough?
Well, we're gonna transition to renewables.
Right.
Okay? Now we've got that settled.
Sounds easy enough, right?
Yeah. So yeah, we've been like saying, okay, we, we, the article passed and now the real work begins. So I was, I've been in conversation with both Nicole and Tyler about next steps and how we move forward. And I had several questions that Nicole answered, or at least was able to make recommendations. And I brought those to our Peterborough Energy Action Meeting. There's a lot of initials in a lot of groups and we'll have to figure out how to keep them straight. But, so we have some, we feel like we need conversation about how to keep it moving forward. And I'm not sure Nicole, if you have a way that you want the conversation to unfold?
Not particularly. I mean, we, we have, we have, as you said, the article's passed. So there's a mission before the town, the select board to lead it. And really what it comes down to is what does the select board want to see in terms of the neck, the first phase of this process? Tyler, you were of course on the emails and you saw what I, you know, my recommendations. But of course, the bills were not, so to get you guys up to speed. The thought is, you know, there's a couple of different ways you can approach this. You can have, you know, go the traditional town committee route, you know, create a Peterborough, you know, an energy action committee. And one of, you know, one of the things that they would do is look into a community power contract. You know, how does that get set up? There's a few different variations that are already out there in New Hampshire that that committee would, would get themselves familiar with the enabling legislation. You know, know what all the steps need to be. Probably, you know, work somewhat with staff. You know, we have some things past town attorney through staff, that sort of thing. But, you know, would mostly be out there on their own, working on that. And also, in an official capacity, be working on getting the word out to the community about this being, you know, the direction that Peterborough wants to go in. And here are the different ways you can do that. Another option, yep, can I add something to that?
Yes, please. So one of the things that, that we talked about last night was the relationship between the energy plan committee and then community power. And so I just want to make sure that people know that those are two separate things.
Right.
And certainly, they are related to each other. But we envision that the plan, like coming up with this energy plan, well, first of all, community power is only about electricity. And the community power, the energy plan is about more than that. So even if community power becomes our whole electricity plan, which I don't think it should, they are subsets and the community power is a subset of the energy plan itself.
So there's, yeah, I'm sorry, I did jump ahead a little bit. So that, that is, that is absolutely the case. So the, the energy plan would be the overall game plan for the, if all the different types of energy usage that the community has, and of course, there's tons of them. I mean, think of everything from, you know, what vehicle you're vehicle to get from point A to point B, what vehicle you use, you know, all, you know, down to, you know, what you're charging your cell phone with and, you know, what you're running your house off of. It's a really big, all encompassing, you know, potential document or, you know, series of documents or websites, however ends up coming together. But then the community power is, is kind of the low hanging fruit of this whole thing. Community power is something that municipalities can now do in New Hampshire. Essentially, what we can do is set up an agreement with a supplier or a broker or there's a few different arrangements to buy green power. And that electricity that is being bought by the community is the default electricity. So it's, you know, if you're buying solar or buying wind or buying, you know, hydro or some combination thereof, that is the default electricity. And people would actually have to opt out to get their electricity supplied by another source. So it's really, at this point, the easiest way to go, the biggest thing for your buck. There's a lot to it though. So it's not the, it's, it's not a very simple, straightforward contract to enter into. There's a lot of pieces and parts to it. And right now, those pieces and parts are being arranged by, being rearranged by the New Hampshire Legislature. So I'm not entirely sure what the end result of that is going to be. So again, kind of circling back around to where I started, which was, you know, really more in the middle. What does the select board want to do? Do you want to set up an official committee that would try to tackle both of these things? Or another option is to essentially empower an ad hoc committee to go forward with this energy plan. Bringing people together, trying to figure out, you know, what the best approaches are. There's a lot of freedom to being an ad hoc committee. They're, they're able to, you know, meet without post date, without taking minutes, you know, that sort of thing. You can have, you know, the entire committee, you know, go to Harlowe's and, you know, hang out, have a couple of drinks without having to worry about, without having to worry about breaking, you know, any kind of, you know, official meeting laws. So there's, you know, definite advantages to that. The disadvantage is that an ad hoc committee can't negotiate on behalf of the town. They can't expend town funds, you know, so there is that side. Which is why if you want to go that approach, provide that kind of freedom to the community plan, you know, group, you would also want to have a more focused, potentially a task force looking at just the community power aspect of this, working on that. They would of course, you know, because they've been working on behalf of the select board in advisory capacity still, but on behalf of the select board investigating community power, seeking out the alternatives and then bringing forward proposal. They would be an official task force, you know, appointed by the select board to work on this project. And then once the project was completed, would be resolved. Kind of your opinion, Bill.
Can the select board appoint one person to work with the lower groups? To be able to speak legally on behalf of the town? Or does it have to be a task force or a committee? Because they've already got committees, right?
So.
And ad hoc seems to be the easiest way to go, but if we empowered one person to speak on their behalf?
Well, certainly, and you could have crossover. I mean, you could have, you know, members of the task force on the energy plan committee, vice versa. But then you got to be sure that you're not running into a quorum problem. Because if you have a quorum and they're, you know, talking about energy and they're talking about, you know, you know, the plan, that, you know, the, the community power plan, then they're running into the problem where they could inadvertently be violating public meeting laws.
So one person would be a quorum?
Well, it could be if you only have a, well, couldn't be one person, but two people certainly could.
Don't talk to yourself.
Should think that through first. Yes, two people certainly could, as you know, being a small board.
Alright. So with most of our, our boards and committees, they, that are official town committees, they do on occasion make decisions, like the Conservation Commission makes decisions, recommends to the planning board, very similar. So I could see where we have an official committee that is advised by a bigger ad hoc committee. Certainly.
You could potentially do that.
Right. And then they would have the power to, that official committee would have the power to, to issue. And then bring it all to the board and town administration.
So just to add some pieces that we've discussed to the conversation. One, in terms of the, the quorum issue, we were looking at like size and we would, just because both pieces are going to be a fair amount of work. You had mentioned either five or seven. We would definitely prefer the seven. As a, as the, as Peterborough Energy Action, we have actually worked with more than that and it has worked well. But if we want to keep it on kind of the lower side, seven would be our preference. And, and also for the task force or whatever, the community power piece would be. And that would also help with the quorum piece.
Yeah, with seven, and three, if three people could.
Could meet, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Seven, like, I, that's, you know, what I included in that email correspondence is that anything smaller than five is really difficult because you just can't run into each other and talk about, you know, going to the gas station without having a problem at that point. So you're, you're much better off with a somewhat larger group. But very large groups become very unwieldy as well, especially when you're getting down to decision-making time.
Yes.
It is easier to work in a smaller group when you, especially when you've got something very specific like that.
The other thing too about the negotiating on behalf of the town, my understanding, and maybe Emily could help with this as well, is that with community power, the, the organization bringing it forward wouldn't be in a process of negotiating. They would be coming forward with a plan that isn't, isn't signing a contract.
Right.
It's setting general guidelines. And so that, that negotiation piece would be happening not through that committee. So I'm not sure if there are other pieces that you were thinking of that would be like official capacity tasks? But as far as the, the entering into a contract, I don't believe that the community power committee would have to do that.
They would not have to enter into a contract. That would always be the select board or, you know, the town administrator on behalf of the select board. And I think that's ubiquitous across, you know, all the communities that have done this so far. But as far as figuring out what the parameters of those contracts are, you know, and that's kind of what I meant by, by negotiation. You're really setting what, what the, you know, the table's going to look like when the parties get to it.
Got it, okay, thanks for that clarification.
I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, anybody's welcome to speak. Just raise your hand, I'll call you in, just if you could state your name from the, from the, right in a minute. Emily.
I'll take the opportunity. Emily Mans. So just to make things hopefully clear and not more confusing, I am the Chair of the Peterborough Energy Committee, which is not presenting organization today, not who these fine people are here. But we are completely in support of course of the 100% renewable goal and in complete support of your process. And I'm just really here to, to understand how you're, you or we together are going to figure out who's doing what to get there. So I was just going to make one point, hopefully I can remember what it was. No, I just wanted to say that the, just the last conversation about empowering committees to speak on behalf of the town, Dory spoke correctly, which is that the community power committee doesn't enter into agreement. But it is nice to call, to ask for information and say, I am calling on behalf of the town of Peterborough. So to have that next level of, of sort of authority without, is, is a nice. So I'm not sure whether you can empower a person or an ad hoc committee or, or something, but it does add a level of, you know, what we're talking about. You know, this is both, this committee is talking both about community action and about stringly technical details. And so the, you know, there are times when.
And that is really the big difference between the officially appointed committees, you know, and the ad hoc committees. Now that is, that is one of the bigger differences. Yeah.
How would, how would this committee dovetail with the master plan?
That's a really good question. We don't currently have a chapter. I'm sure that if this, if an ad hoc committee or an official committee want to take that on, writing that sustainability, energy, whatever you want to call it, chapter for the master plan, the master plan steering committee, I assume, would be more than happy to review that.
Just to make, make things a little even more confusing, I am on both the Peterborough Energy Committee and Peterborough Energy Action, so I'm, I can keep them straight really easily, nobody else can. But I know that Emily is on the steering committee for the master plan. And the, the survey that went out had a couple of questions specifically about sustainability. And when I both was at one of their meetings to talk about the master plan and also in the interview that Peterborough Energy Action did around the 100% renewable resolution, we talked about how Danica was very interested in integrating sustainability into that process. And even beyond just the chapter though, so like the first chapters, I think, are housing and what else?
First chapter's the, and the vision statement.
And the vision statement. And that it would be integrated into that as well.
And so we are in the information collection phase, we're getting community feedback. And so I don't have a report, I, I wouldn't report, oh yeah, it's that committee, but that is, as Dory said, there were questions asked and we're getting a lot of really great comments from a lot of people. And I think it'll be reflected in the update.
So is, I know that we've touched on this a couple times, but I still feel like I didn't quite get the answer. Is there, is there only those two options? Or can we appoint one person to speak on behalf of those two committees?
I mean, you could.
To report to us?
Or you could have a liaison sign that. You know, one of you wants to volunteer to be that, you know, connection between the groups.
Which we would want.
As well.
Well, that would make it easier, right?
Certainly would make it easier.
Okay.
Streamlines the whole process, yeah.
Well, with my familiarity with the Peterborough Energy Committee, I would volunteer to do that.
There you go.
That'd be great.
You're the spokesperson.
Excellent.
Stay ad hoc and get real work done.
Yeah.
And tell us about it. Perfect.
So can I just clarify, I think we're talking about a liaison to Peterborough Energy Action Committee.
Right.
Well, both, right?
Or.
I was, I've been sitting, you know, on the PDC, you know, and I can't.
So the way I'm envisioning this is that we're actually forming different, two new committees. Not, not one of the ones that already exists. I imagine however, that there will be lots of overlap as far as the people involved. But I don't think that either the full energy committee or PE, Peterborough Energy Action will be the actual committees. What I see is that we're going to have a, and, and this is just my vision and I could be, please, please give feedback, is that there would be an energy plan committee and then the, the community power committee that would be kind of working in tandem. Does that, does that seem right? And then, and Bill could be the liaison. Is that right?
Could you, as Emily mentioned, that, that being able to say, hey, because Bill's not going to make all, Bill Kennedy's not going to make all the calls to whomever. So it would be good to say I'm calling on behalf of Peter, the town of Peterborough. So, Brian.
Brian Field. The way I understood our discussion last night was that what we'd like, and you may not, but what we'd like is to see two committees, one that would be an ad hoc committee, that would be the planning committee. There will be another committee of people who are interested in detailed stuff, which I am not, who, which would be involved in the community power. That could be, doesn't need to be an ad hoc committee. That could be the town-appointed committee because you want those people to be able to sit down and negotiate on behalf of the town to get things ready for you guys to sign or for the administrators.
Right. And they'd also work on the master plan chapter there.
Or what have you, yeah. I mean, you could certainly have crossover, you know, amongst any of these various official and ad hoc groups. And as there is. Again, as there isn't a forum of any particular group sitting in the room.
That's the thing.
That's where...
It sounds like, at least initially for your first, however, set of months, six months, there's going to be so much that you need to do that posting a meeting schedule and having a forum of people and making sure you're not talking about it outside of that group might limit you.
Right.
So, I mean, if...
Particularly since so many people are doing similar committees.
Very interesting.
If I was throwing out an idea, I'd say, do it that way, ad hoc with Bill. And then in six months, if you feel like there needs to be an official appointed committee, then we could do it then.
The problem is, is that that would also delay the community power thing. So as of right now, as of right now, it's still a little up in the air, but it looks like community power is still going to be an option municipalities going forward. And if that's the case, and depending on how quickly the select board wants to move on that, we'd want to start working on getting, you would want to tell us to start working on getting a committee together, start putting out the call for volunteers.
Is that the only way you can do that?
To create a brand-new committee. It's that or you put it on the next town meeting, Lauren.
No, I mean, the only way you can get into the community power.
Yes, you have to, you have to have a contract. It's, you're contracting with an energy company or a supplier or broker.
Right. That has to be a committee that does that?
Or it could be the select board.
Or a member of the select board that's going to be the liaison to that.
That's a lot of work. I mean, it really is a lot of work. I wouldn't put it on a single person.
Okay, well, I don't know about it. So I was just throwing out ideas. If that's what you're raising your hand about, you can do it however you feel is most appropriate and effective.
So the law says that the process starts when the executive body, the select board, appoints a committee. And then it ends with the legislative body, town meeting, voting on the plan. So that's what the law says. Do you understand it any differently than that?
The community power law is very clearly laid out and that's what it is. And these are two really separate and related issues.
Yes.
Okay, well, then that's the way it has to happen.
Yeah, community power can be, you don't have to care about renewable energy actually to do it, although it's born out of people's desire for more renewable energy and efficiency. But it's, they're completely separate.
I'll make a motion that we appoint a seven-member community power commission starting July 1st. Starting June 1st.
Today is June 1st. And then do we just gather names or are we going to just pull them out of our hat right now and say it's you? Or you don't get a choice or you're on the committee?
We'll get like the voter's checklist or something. You can just pick some random names.
Whole names.
Whole names, yeah. What we've done in the past is we've basically just put out a call for volunteers, anyone who's interested in it, particularly people who have a background, skill set, what have you, that lends themselves well to this particular work. And, you know, at an upcoming meeting, we'll have a staff of those for you to review and hopefully make some decisions out of it.
Okay.
Let's say we get a handful of people that want to promote natural gas. Would they be on that committee?
Hypothetically, I suppose, yeah.
All right.
Really, you know, it's up to the board to set the parameters. You know, you can, you can say, "This is the kind of power plan that we're looking for. It is going to meet the goal of, you know, or help the town to meet the goal of more under goal 11." You know, and so obviously, natural gas isn't going to really move us in that direction.
Does that have to be in the motion or that can be in the mission statement?
That will be in the mission statement. I think that's going to be a lot easier and so we can start working on that.
That's actually why we went with the warrant article first, is so that we can do exactly that, say, "We've got this mandate now. These other things are in service to it."
So do you have a motion on the table?
Motion on the table. One second, this is in a second. Great.
I just wanted to clarify that, actually, again, with the two separate issues, community power, really the gas person doesn't have, like, they can't, they wouldn't mess with it. Community power is about cost and power and it's not about... It would be fine. It real, it's, the energy plan is a much, is a bigger issue. I agree. There are people who, you know, love, you know, see smokestacks and see prosperity and that's an issue that you'll need to clarify or that was clarified with the warrant article. Community power is about cost and choices and consumer protections. There's all kinds of things that community power give to the community that resilience. There are options for all kinds of things that are unrelated to energy, but it just tends to be a great vehicle for renewable energy.
Exactly, yeah. There's, absolutely. And that's where the mission for, you know, the select board choose will come into play to help to narrow the focus and make sure that that's the direction, if that's what they...
So I've also started talking to people about, actually, both committees. So there's, I don't know if I've gotten any definitive yeses for a committee power committee, but I would also hope that, but I have got some folks also in mind that if the town approves for the energy plan committee, although I guess if it's ad hoc, it doesn't matter.
You can go ahead and pull those people together tomorrow night.
Go to Harlow's.
Yeah.
Or Post and Bean. If Brian's going to be on it, it's Post and Bean.
Well, Harlow's might not be helping. All right, so we have a motion. We had a second. We had some further discussion. Who can raise their vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, excuse me. Could you read the motion quickly?
So I have it as the select board is interested in appointing a seven-member community power commission to begin June 1st.
Sorry. Is that vague enough?
No, it's fine. You want to vote on it?
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no opposed? Thank you. Great. Excellent. Hey, I mean, you know, it's going to go that way. Great.
Well, the town told us so. All righty.
I personally would like to see some integration with the master plan, though, if we can do that somehow, somewhere, but particularly with the action committee.
So what is, we got the motion for community power. What about the energy plan? Is there anything that needs to be officially done in the meeting for that?
I mean, you could certainly, just the board could indicate whether or not it just needs to be an official committee or an ad hoc committee.
Did you come up with an energy plan?
Plan for the whole committee, yeah.
I think that could be an ad hoc.
Unless at some point something changes and you think that it should be an official committee.
Right.
But if you want to, you know, live a room, legs to it, to get something officially done.
Yeah, we get a lot more done than ad hoc committee.
So there's one other issue that we would like to have discussion around, and that is communication, as you were indicating, between the committee and staff and/or select board. Are, what I would, I guess, let me clarify. Are you still, Bill, volunteering to be on one or both of those committees?
Yes.
Excellent.
The liaison tip.
The liaison...
Because I know most of the players.
Right, okay. So we've got, we've got a member already on both committees. Awesome.
That's why you put me on the select.
Exactly, yes.
We've had that.
Okay. It also makes sense, though, for us to have...
Is he, that's, sorry, not there, don't you worry.
...conversation with staff. And I know you said that your, you know, staff time is very limited. How do we, I guess, my concern is that we won't be as efficient because we won't know that's not going to work and a staff person can say, "Don't even try." Or, "We've got this, you know, solution to this issue that you're kind of spinning your wheels around." How, how can we make sure that we have good communication with the staff because it's ultimately going to be the staff that's going to have to do this?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, is it something that a municipality implements? You know, we, not every aspect of the community energy plan is going to be municipally driven, government-driven.
True.
There are going to be some elements, you know, hypothetically, you know, there could be building requirements that get added in, you know, that would ultimately become part of the building, you know, the zoning code, you know, something along those lines. I'm trying to imagine what that would be.
We could also be recommending community solar.
Yep.
That would certainly involve staff involvement.
Could, could very well. I mean, you could, if you're looking to create a new solar farm, you might want to look at, you know, municipal own land. It's hypothetical, you know, it's, there's certainly going to be those points. But then there's going to be other things. I mean, if, you know, for instance, there's another round of federal incentives to do solar on your homes. That's not really something the municipality is going to get involved in. That's going to be something that, you know, another solarized type of project, you know, will do. So I guess it's going to depend on the issue.
So is, would it be possible, just because, for instance, this exact conversation, I would not have been thinking about it that way. So having a clear kind of communication plan between the committees and the staff is something that we talked about that would be great to have.
I think that's also where your liaison is going to come in.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that that's really the role of the liaison, was to bring the resources of the town to the committee.
Wonderful.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Emily being on the master plan steering committee, and I've taken on that as my liaison task going forward. So we'll have the triangle of information.
And is there something I can convey to the master plan steering committee of this meeting?
Yeah, what Bill was talking about.
Yeah.
Implementing.
Thank you. Implementing the sustainability section of the master plan.
Yep.
And this would be a major part of that, of course.
If it's, you know, it's mentioned here and there, kind of, you know, it was part of the vision we did last time. So it hasn't been called out as, now we have, now we have a, some reach.
Anything else that the committee, committees, whatever, the overlapping committees wants to talk about?
I mean, this isn't written in stone, so it's all, you know, subject to revision and, you know, being revised in the future.
All right, great. Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, exciting.
Yep, very.
Next up. We're running out of water.
This is an all-good news meeting. We have good news here.
All right, welcome Seth MacLaren.
Thank you. My name's Seth MacLaren, I work for Public Works here. This is the administrator as well. Last September, we came to the board with concerns about drought conditions in the state. That was pervasive across New England. That was 9/16, where we put a voluntary ban into effect, asking residents of the community to be careful with their usage of water. As the season winded down, we headed into the fall. A short two weeks later, we entered a little bit more severe drought situation in New Hampshire and just like we're authorized through 16284 through 91, the community to implement a mandatory outdoor watering ban. Flash forward to the present day, actually about a month ago or so, we mentioned we hit through the spring, come back to the board with an update. Right now, and I'll step back one quick second, we follow the lead of New Hampshire D E S and thus we watch continuously, the utilities superintendent through myself, talking to Coleman and back to the board, the community, we constantly watch what the drought conditions are in the state of New Hampshire. As recently as the early part of the spring, we were still in a moderate to mild drought as of March 25th, and maybe it changed slightly before that. But as of right now, we're in a, we're unseasonably dry, so we're not in a drought anymore. So we'd like to put up to the consideration of the board today, removing the outdoor watering ban and going to a voluntary outdoor watering ban, asking people to, again, you know, use their best judgment in what they're doing, whether it's lawns or crops or whatever else the case may be. But we feel comfortable looking at what New Hampshire D E S has provided, but also monitoring our equipment that's handling, pumping to our wells, from our wells to our holding tanks, that we're in a good position to ease restrictions as the summer kicks off and then reevaluate again. We go a week, a couple of weeks out, come back to the board for a, if any, adjustment needs to be made from there. So for your consideration, it's removing the mandatory outdoor watering ban, going to a voluntary, voluntary outdoor watering ban at this time, and then we'll go back with an update if there needs to be what we're probably...
I like the less restrictive watering ban at this point. I think people can exercise caution, but we're not in a severe drought yet.
We're not even technically in a drought anymore. The most recent information coming from D E S is we're teetering on drought. So sort of act where we are when we put the voluntary ban into effect.
Right.
But as we know, these have been, these drought conditions have sort of been coming in waves over the last few years. Continuously monitor it from our perspective and come back to the board with an updated recommendation if necessary.
Seems like we would have teetered a little more towards not drought last weekend.
We did, doing a lot of vacations.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a reason that Seth's, Jared's job, unless he makes recommendations, and that's his recommendation. I'm good with it.
Do we have any instances of enforcement of the water ban?
We haven't had to enforce it. We've had to knock on a couple of doors and remind people, but people have complied for the most part.
So people have...
Or staff have come to me and said so-and-so is doing whatever. One of the nice things about Peterborough is we're a nice community and tends to be you give someone a reminder and then they're...
It was just kind of...
Yeah, I thought you were going to say there's always somebody to let people know.
We have a country that's an individual, of course. Is there any way we can get an ad hoc committee to convince people that they don't need correct green and correct lawns? They should have hermit culture and that sort of thing. Is that the next committee? Who's working on getting those people even? I think, yeah, Seth, I, you know, you know what you're doing, so I feel comfortable with them advancing. Do we need a motion or...
I have a motion, yes.
Well, I make a motion that we follow Seth's recommendation to lift the ban and go back to a voluntary as of right now.
One second.
All right. Any further discussion? Anybody have any comments that might change my mind? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Seth.
Makes you feel better. I've never longed for it.
Nor have I.
I hope that it doesn't drop.
Unless they'll turn the whole...
I'm also not on downwater.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you, Seth.
Last piece.
Last piece, apparently we're carrying forward with a select board chair. It's worked out thus far.
Far, yeah.
In all the years they've been having a chair to run these meetings. I haven't ruined that.
Nope, nope. Carry the mantle well, so.
Oh, well, you did just, you could throw a hand up.
I think that you're like perfect for the job, so I make a motion that we keep Tyler as chair or reappoint, if you will.
I agree.
One second. Excellent.
Take that.
I have to reframe the wording on that, right?
Don't have to, but...
Okay, thanks.
You can do it right here, I guess.
Yeah, secret ballot.
Yeah, wait, we got four votes.
Okay. We'll make it. Great. Excellent.
Thank you, Seth.
No minutes to approve, right? Do we have a motion in the chair?
I have so much.
One second. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you very much.
This feels pretty good, doesn't it?
It does, yeah.
It does. Although, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have, versus eating their dinner right now, be able to ask...